Welcome, everyone. Before we begin, we will have a prayer by Councilman Carlos Graham, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's bow our head for prayer. Lord, I ask that you continue to have your hands on this city and that you provide this council and mayor with the vision and wisdom to continue to guide Jefferson City in the right direction. Lord, I ask that you speak to us in many ways so that we can make decisions to help make lives better in our community. Lord, I pray that we, as leaders, standing here tonight, continue to do what is best for all people. Bless our public safety members and their families. Be with them while they are serving and protecting our city. Lord, I ask that you dispatch your angel of protection around them and our city. I ask a special prayer for all those who are affected by the shooting in Santa Fe, Texas. Help them to understand during these difficult times that you are still in control. I also pray, Lord, for the safety of our country. I ask that you bless the soldiers that stand in harm's way each and every day to help ensure our freedom and safety. I ask that you keep those that live here in these United States of America safe from others who intentions are to do us harm for being free, for worshiping you, and for allowing people to speak freely. May your blessings, oh Lord, be with us this day and every day to come. In your darling Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call to order the Monday, May 21st, 2018 City Council meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item three, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Councilman Graham.
Madam Mayor, a motion to move item 7B up to make it item 4E. The Hale Hinchis, presentation of a coin.
Thank you. Any objections? All in favor of adoption of agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And are there any scouts in the audience this evening? Always like to recognize our scouts. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. We have a recognition of the Mayor's Choice Sketch Day Award winner. We have Ms. Ciara Wheatley here this evening. Ciara, if you'd like to come to the podium, and we'd like to welcome you here. And as you can see, Ciara's winning artwork is here, and she is in 10th grade at Jefferson City High School. So, we're very glad to have you with us. We had a nice ceremony here at City Hall last week where we had some recognitions of the Sketch Day winners. And tell us a little bit about your inspiration on this artwork.
Well, last year, there was a winner, and they won because of the work on the bridge and for the river and like how it looks. And this year, I know that we've been working on like the Capitol and how like the next few years, we're trying to make it more presentable. And I just wanted to kind of represent that. And I know that the trains have been a really big part of our history here in Jefferson City. So, I wanted to like incorporate all of that.
Wonderful. Well, congratulations, Ciara. This is beautiful. It's always hard to choose the Mayor's Choice because there's a lot of great talent in the artists when they do Sketch Day. But this particular one, it really was so vibrant. The colors were beautiful. And really, everything you said is what really got me was the trains and how much they're a part of our city and our history and how much we love going to watch the trains here and the Capitol needing. I needed a Capitol in the office there, too. The other Mayor's Choice Award winners, this will be the fourth year for this, are hanging in the office here at City Hall. And so, yours will also be on display there as well. And having the Capitol and all the wonderful improvements and being the capital city and the train and the riverfront and how we're accessing the riverfront and all those wonderful things that are happening in our city's past and our city's future. So, your piece is beautiful, and keep up the great work. So, you are in 10th grade. Is art something you want to pursue?
Yes, I want to go to college. I want, well, I'm going to major in psychology, but I want to minor in art. And I want to do something in my future, in my career, that involves art because that's been a big part of my life, like throughout, like everything.
Well, very proud of you. Congratulations on winning the Mayor's Choice Award. And who is your teacher, your art teacher?
Ms. Cohen.
Wonderful. Well, I also have a note from the Art Club. I know they're having a reception this evening and wanted me to present this to you. And if we could get a picture together, you're welcome to come forward and we'll take a picture. And if council would like to come up behind me and we'll get a picture of you with City Council members. All right. Item B, we are recognizing the May Outstanding Employee Service Award recipient, Bob Sanova. And Mr. Kroll will make that presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll have Mr. Sanova and Sonny Sanders, the Director of Planning and Protective Services, and Ryan Mullman, who is the Overseas Law Department. Mr. Sanova works for both of them as well. So, this is to recognize Bob Sanova, City of Jefferson Part-Time Housing and Property Inspector, Planning and Protective Services, and part-time bailiff in the Law Department for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for May 2018. And I'll read through a few of the items that were referenced on the, actually several nomination forms. Mr. Sanova goes out of his way to provide outstanding customer service. Mr. Sanova is always going above and beyond to help other employees and departments. One example of Mr. Sanova's exemplary performance occurred when Mr. Sanova was performing his inspector duties, at which time he came upon a car accident. Mr. Sanova responded, reported to the accident and provided CPR and stabilizing first aid until emergency medical services arrived. Mr. Sanova's quick thinking and knowledge of emergency procedures helped save a life while on the job. Mr. Sanova maintains a calm demeanor even in difficult situations. Mr. Sanova is a high performer with a keen eye for detail and knows how to work effectively and efficiently with the public. Mr. Sanova provides the leadership not only for his designated areas of responsibility, but also offers suggestions for improvement for other departments and functions, including supervision of the private security for municipal court. Mr. Sanova's follow-through on projects, tasks, and commitments is excellent. And Mr. Sanova's significant contributions to the overall quality of life of the city are recognized and appreciated. And it's particularly worth noting that sometimes Mr. Sanova's job is encouraging people and enforcing, informing them of some of the property code maintenance that we have. And sometimes that can be very, very challenging? Challenging. Challenging, so. So, congratulations and thanks to Mr. Bob Sanova, City of Jefferson, Part-Time Housing and Property Inspector for Planning and Protective Services and part-time bailiff for the Law and Municipal Court.
Congratulations.
And you have some family here or friends here you want to introduce? Fan club? It's a welcome. Thank you.
She's hung in there, cop's wife and that, part-time, everything else, so.
That's right. I forgot to mention you were a police officer for how many years before?
Thirty years and a month.
Well, thank you very much for the service and appreciate everything.
Thank you, and congratulations. You've been outstanding from your days as a police officer and now everything else that you're doing for the city. And it's evident in everything that Steve said and then more. I know when we see you at City Hall, which is often in all these different areas, you're always so friendly and outgoing, and we appreciate all of your service. So, thank you for everything you do for the city. And I'd like to present a city coin. So, if you'd like to come forward, we'll present that. All right. Item C, we have some proclamations to present. And Chief Schofield will present these for our former firefighters' pension board recognition.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'd ask that the members of our firefighters' pension board join me at the podium. So, for those of you that do not know, we have a mix of personnel that serve on our firefighters' pension board. We have citizen members as well as elected representatives from the Fire Department and other city staff. And so, for many years, the citizens' members have provided us a tremendous amount of expertise and guidance and leadership. And they really set us on a very good course, a very positive place, a very sound footing for us going forward, moving us, transitioning into loggers, not only for our active employees, but most recently for our retirees and our closed pension plan for them. And so, as part of that process, their work was incomplete. And as everyone will remember, that there was an election in April, April 3rd, and the citizens voted to modify the city charter so that the pension board was no longer required. And so, we wanted to take a moment to recognize these individuals for their years of dedicated service and leadership to the firefighters' pension board. So, I believe the mayor has three different proclamations. Is that correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And so, first, we want to recognize Jeff Russler. Jeff? Yes, she would hand you the proclamation.
Congratulations.
And next, we have John Tuck.
Congratulations.
And finally, we have Norm Robinson. And I have to tell a story about Norm as he's accepting his proclamation. Norm has been on our pension board for over 19 years. And as a very young firefighter, I remember going over to the MoDOT building, at which time he was the executive director, and I remember thinking, wow, isn't this cool that a guy who runs the entire MoDOT pension system takes a little bit of his free time to volunteer for us on the firefighters' pension board? So, even as a very young, impressionable firefighter 20 years ago, I recognized that contribution, and he stayed with us all these years. So, thank you to all three of you.
Thank you for all of your service. We appreciate it very much. And if you would all like to come forward, we'll get a picture with the proclamations. All right. Thank you all for your service on that. And now, we have item D, the proclamation celebrating 100 years of Rotary in the City of Jefferson. We have several Rotarians in the audience if they would like to come forward to the podium this evening. And we have some Rotarians here as our City Council members as well. So, if the Rotarians would want to come forward and maybe introduce yourselves at the podium here. Hi, Frank.
Hi, there. Thank you.
So, you're welcome to all go to the podium there and just if you'd like to introduce yourselves. And what we're here, and I'll read this, is we're going to celebrate 100 years of Rotary in Jefferson City. But if you'd like to introduce yourselves.
Rotary Club of Jefferson City, I'm Steve Newman.
Welcome.
Fellow club member to Steve, John Cobb.
Pat Roqueur, and I'm a member with Steve and John, and we're the Noon Membership.
Frank Rysik, Jefferson City Evening Rotary. And they've been letting me schedule speakers for the past 10 years.
I'm Nick Manako. And I wasn't here in 1918. I was minus 12. So, you can do the math. But the Rotary Club is so proud that you're looking at us and saying, you did a good job. I started to make a list of those things that I know that happened. It goes back as far as 1947. I'm already at 94 projects that have been completed by the Jefferson City Rotary Club.
Wow.
And started out with the bridge across the river. Because there was no way to go across the river except by boat. And the Rotary Club used its first project to help the bridge be constructed. And they formed a little organization called the Rotary Boys Band. I have a photograph of it in front of the Capitol at that time. So, a lot of things have happened in 100 years. And thank you all for recognizing a worthy service club in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Manako. Appreciate everyone's service in Rotary. And I'll share this proclamation. It says, whereas Rotary is an international organization of over 1.2 million diverse members worldwide with a shared vision to unite people to take action for a better world. And whereas the motto of Rotary is service above self. And whereas Rotary's six focus areas of service are peace and conflict prevention and resolution, disease prevention and treatment, water and sanitation, maternal and child health, basic education and literacy, and economic and community development. And whereas a chance meeting in a pole and train car between Henry Martin, Rotary's District Governor in 1918, and Missouri State Senator A.L. McCauley laid the groundwork for the City of Jefferson's first Rotary Club. And whereas the Rotary Club of Jefferson City received its charter from Rotary International on June 1st, 1918, becoming the first Rotary Club in Jefferson City. And whereas the Rotary Club of Jefferson City was directly involved in founding other Rotary Clubs, including clubs in Jefferson City. And whereas the Rotary Clubs in Jefferson City collectively have been instrumental in starting or attracting several businesses to Jefferson City, chartering several other community organizations, including the Jefferson City Area YMCA, and initiating or organizing numerous community activities and events, including the annual welcome lunch for new teachers and an annual student government day, an annual event since 1955. And whereas, having reached its 100th year of service to the Jefferson City community, the Rotary Club of Jefferson City prepares to embark on its next 100 years of service. Therefore, I, Carrie Turgeon, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, do hereby proclaim 2018 as a celebration of 100 years of Rotary in the City of Jefferson. So, congratulations for 100 years of service in our community. And we will get a picture with the proclamation. And I'm also a proud Rotarian, a member of the Breakfast Rotary Club. And we have other Rotarians here. Councilman Hussey. And you want to mention which club? Wonderful. And Mr., Councilman Fitzwater? Wonderful. And City Administrator Kroll also. So, we appreciate all the Rotarians. So, we'll get the other Rotarians up front and we'll do a picture together. All right. And we have item E, which looks like 7B on your agenda. At this time, we would like to ask Hale Hinchis to come to the podium. We'd like to present a city coin to this Helias High School alumni and University of Alabama football player. And we are so very proud to have you here. Welcome to City Council. And I would like to turn it over to absolutely the number one Roll Tide Alabama fan that I've ever seen in my life. So, we're going to turn it over to Councilman Graham.
Thank you so very much, Madam Mayor. Hale, first of all, welcome back home. I've been talking to your father on the phone for the past month, trying to arrange this date for you to come to City Council and be recognized. I must apologize to you. I did not do this back when you won the national title in 2015. It's just time just had flew by so quick. But certainly, I went in 2017, and I know we're going to do it again next year as well. I wanted to bring you before the council to say thank you for a job well done. Thank you for representing Jefferson City to the highest level. I think that all of my friends who follow me on Facebook knows that Hale Hinchis is number 84 and that he is from Jefferson City, Missouri. I do have two questions for you, though, Hale. And the first question is, what is it like being coached by Nick Saban?
Well, someone like Coach Saban, I'm sure everyone's heard their own, you know, story of what he's like. He really is, you know, the best type of guy. He puts all the needs of his players first. And he really, you know, cares about every single one of us and wants us to become, you know, not only the best players we can be, but the best people we can be. And that's something that I was extremely attracted to ever since I went down there as a recruit. And something that I can say has extremely impacted my life and, you know, has hopefully set me up for a bright future. And just every time I get to talk to him, I learn something new, some leadership, some wisdom. And if we could all be more like him, we would be, you know, great people.
And then, my second question is, who's the guy that carries around the Gatorade Cup for Coach Saban? His name?
His name's Kyle.
Kyle?
He is a, he's one of our equipment managers. He's got a pretty important job.
I see that. I see that.
Coach Saban probably likes to yell a lot, as you can see. So, his voice gets a little hoarse. So, his Gatorade Cup job is actually very important, so.
And I believe we have a homecoming game coming up this year, October the 13th? And who are we playing on that day?
We are playing Missouri Tigers.
Oh, University of Missouri, okay. So, I don't know about the rest of my colleagues, but certainly it's been from Alabama. Oh, that's my house right there. What is that? Certainly it's been from Alabama. I will be there. And I hope that some of my colleagues can join me as we take this road trip to Alabama and get some of that good barbecue at Dreamlands Barbecue Place, so. Did I also see your commercial on AT&amp;T Direct TV?
That is actually the guy who wore 84 before me.
Okay.
But I get that all the time. But he was also, he kind of looks like me, so. Understandable.
And I know you do have your family here. So, if you'd like to introduce them, have them stand, introduce them.
My dad, Chris Hinchis, my little sister Hannah, my mom Jennifer, my older sister Hillary, and then my grandparents Ray and Marilyn Hinchis.
All right. The Hinchis family, welcome, welcome, welcome. Are there any questions or comments any of my colleagues have? I know I may.
Councilman Kimna?
I didn't get the pleasure of coaching Hale. He kind of bypassed freshman, the freshman team. But I also want to speak, I did play for Ray Hinchis and coached alongside Chris Hinchis. So, not only is it a great representative Hale for the city, but he does come from a great family. And it's great to see that character to continue to go through. So, I appreciate you coming back and taking the time to just say hi. And I know you've got more things going on, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Well, we are so very proud of you here in the City of Jefferson and these accomplishments. And we appreciate you coming here. And is it nice to be back here in Jefferson City?
Absolutely. You know, it's an extreme honor to be able to represent Jefferson City, you know, the city that I love closest to my heart. And, you know, I just want to thank all of you guys for helping create a place that can help young athletes like myself grow and be able to accomplish their dreams. You know, if it weren't for you guys, this place, you know, wouldn't be like it is. So, I just want to say thank you from myself and all the young athletes out there for, you know, everything that you guys do.
Well, thank you. You make us so proud, and we wish you the very best success and appreciate all your wonderful sportsmanship and being a great role model and a wonderful person for the City of Jefferson, too. So, we appreciate it. Any other counsel? Councilman Hussey?
Mr. Hinchis, did I say that you just actually graduated already with? And so, you'll continue your education throughout the next year still? Are you going to start graduate school, I assume?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I will be getting my master's in marketing, which will take a year. So, I graduate in three years with the help of summer school. And I'll be able to complete my master's degree in four years total, so.
Congratulations. That's more impressive, I think, than playing football in Alabama. So, congratulations.
That is what you call a student athlete.
Yes.
A student first and then athlete. Last thing I want to say, Hale, is that a lot of people counted us out. They counted us out. When we had lost the Iron Bowl game, when we lost against Auburn, that was it. They had ridden us off. But congratulations and thank you for what you did on that football field. You helped to redeem me.
Yes.
Because I had stopped answering telephone calls. So, we do have a city coin we'd like to present to you.
We would like to present it. So, I guess when we say homecoming, then we say Roll Tide!
Roll Tide!
Okay, so, we'll say Jeff City Mo. We'll say Roll Tide! Roll Tide! Okay, we'd love to present this coin. If you'd like to invite your family up as well, that would be great.
And I do want to recognize Kim. She's in the back. She's a city employee. She came back just to see you tonight, Hale. So, she had gotten off at 5:00 and came back to see you at 6:00.
She works up here in the front window. She's got Alabama stuff all showing.
I'm coming down again. I'm coming down, Madam Mayor.
Nah, he's just going down to get a picture with you. You going to go on down, Carlos?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No idea.
Over here. That's for Carlos, I gotta make sure.
Steve, you don't have to video down, just take the picture, Steve.
Okay.
Let him get a selfie.
All right, congratulations Hale, that is so cool. All right, Item 5, we have public hearings. Item A, Mrs. Donaldson, please.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving a preliminary PUD plan for property addressed as 3430 West Edgewood Drive.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a preliminary PUD plan approval. The property is to be used for a Veterans Affairs Clinic for the veterans in the area here as a medical facility. The property currently is PUD, so this is not a rezoning, it is merely a submission and request of approval for the actual PUD plan for what's going to be constructed on the site. The, you can see sort of the outline here, the location of the property is at the south end of Wildwood at the West Edgewood intersection. The building is going to be an approximately 10,000 square foot building with a brick facade. They're also requesting future expansion of another 6,000 square feet for additional space. The parking lot has, I believe, 55 parking spots. You'll be able to enter and exit off of both Wildwood and Edgewood, with Edgewood being only a right-in, right-out driveway. The facade photographs, this is pretty much the same building here. You can see it looks very nice with the brick facade and the low roof and architectural shingles and whatnot like that. This type of building has been built before by the same developer. He's here tonight, can answer more questions, and I'd be glad to answer questions, too. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5 to 0 to approve this and is making the recommendation to approve it to the City Council.
Thank you. Any questions for Sonny? Mr. Sanders, I'm sorry. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on Bill 201809? Welcome.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, my name's David Irvine, and I'm here on behalf of SI Property Investments. We've been working with the chamber and with Mike Bates at CMPS in regards to this PUD request. Mike couldn't be here, he had a knee surgery and is out for the evening, but here to answer any questions you might have, and we're excited for the project, for the veterans here, and pending your approval moving forward, so.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions of council? Councilman Mahalovich?
Yes, just one thing. Does a federal building, a building of this sort that's being used for federal purposes, would it require any 1% for the arts or any public art? Just curious about that. Are you, you'll be renting this, I assume?
That's correct, yes, sir.
So you don't have any requirement there?
No, we don't have any specification of that nature.
But I understand this is, this building will be above industrial grade. It'll be a very nice facade and.
Yes, and, sorry, I don't have more pictures to show you directly, but we have done this in several locations in the past with the utmost concern about appearance, and, you know, the very first time we did this type of a project, one of the members from the VA said, "Look, if you're planning on putting up a metal building or, you know, something of that nature, we're not interested." And, you know, we have very, very much taken that to heart, you know, from granite countertops and, you know, full brick on all four sides of the building, and, you know, very, very much have looked at it as something that we want the veterans to be proud of and the community to be proud of. That's the most important thing.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on Bill 201809? Welcome.
Thank you. I had not planned to speak on this, but most of you know that I help veterans each and every day. And what's additionally important, and you need to know for our economy, is the number of dollars that get dropped into our economy as a result of VA federal benefits that come to our veterans. Generally, a catchment area is much beyond Cole County or Jefferson City. So, just to show you how life-supporting this is, I was in Columbia for an issue, get a telephone call from a young man who is about to kill himself in Holt Summit. I am able to call into the Edgewood Building via one of their backdoor numbers so that I can have them on hold at the front door so that we can stay on the phone with that veteran as he is able to drive himself from Holt Summit to this facility. So not only are we benefiting from an economical benefit, but we are saving lives daily by having a VA community outreach center here in Jeff City. So thanks for your support for doing that, and thanks for every thing you guys do each and every day.
Thank you. All right, any questions? Anyone else here to speak on 201809? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and take up that bill. Is there any council deliberation or questions? All right, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 6, appointments by the mayor. We have a sheet attached here to the agenda, and Mrs. Strope will go through those, the list there.
Thank you. And we have a list, a total of 14 appointments. The majority of these appointments are reappointments. There are two that I would like to point out that, who are both have served two full terms, so to serve a third term, they would need two-thirds majority confirmation from the council, and those are Jack Deacon to the Planning and Zoning Commission and Dean DeToye to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Strope? Is there a motion to approve the appointments?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 7, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. Item A, we have the Heroes Outing, and we'd like to invite forward everyone who's here on the behalf of that. We have Mr. Hank Stratman and veteran Tracy Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm no stranger to this council, as you well know. I know most of you, we drink coffee at Brew House frequently.
I'd like to introduce the steering committee of a special, really special, unique initiative we recently have created because we think it's good, not only for veterans, but also good for the special needs people of the Jefferson City community. Tracy Johnson, Phil Kaliff with Disabled American Veterans, Don Hinchis, you know him as a veteran, and you all know Pat Kerr. And there's also Jim Wish, and our mayor is also honorary member of our steering committee. About two months ago, Dan Baumgartner and Pat Kerr and a couple of us kind of got together and said, "He's always been wanting to do something special to inform the community of the unique ADA-compliant, accessible nine-hole golf course that's at Turkey Creek." And he's been talking to me for several years about how to help him promote that. And so with his initiative and incentive, we formed a steering committee, and what we want to do this year is focus it on disabled veterans. Pat Kerr's going to bring in from the VA hospitals and VA centers and homes and other places around the regional community here, seriously disabled veterans, and we're going to host them for a golf outing. And the whole purpose of this initiative is to raise money so that, if you look on your table there, you should have a flyer with a flag on the front, but look on the back. The whole purpose of this is to raise money so we can buy more ADA-compliant and carts that allow the seriously disabled, the really disabled, to enjoy an outing or the sport of golf. And we, right now, he has one. And it's not just for veterans. You know, we have the Special Olympics coming to town, and they're interested in being part of taking their people out there for not only playing golf, but to go fishing, to have an outing, to have something to do like normal people do, and enjoy life. So we have a major fundraising going on, and we started about a month ago now, I think, and it's sponsored by the VFW, post-1003, that was the number, I got it right? And we're out soliciting organizations and people to sponsor a disabled person. Right now, it happens to be a disabled veteran. But all the money, all the proceeds, Turkey Creek's not going to make a dime off of this. It all goes to buying these golf carts for the special needs people. He has been partnering with, and while you may not know this, he partners with the Missouri Conservation Department. They come out and help disabled people fish, they stock the ponds. He's partnering with the VA and the Missouri Medical Health Units. They come out with their people for therapy. And just recently, Capital Region Medical Center discovered that his facility and how it could help them with stroke patients in their therapy and recovery. So we, Jeff City, have a diamond in the rough that we need to exploit, and we think this event's just going to, the tip of the iceberg. We want to grow it, we're part of the Salute to America program. Diane Gillespie's part of our steering committee, and she's integrated us into the Salute to America program. So we're just here tonight to bring this to your attention, and you help us spread the word, and we don't even want your money, once you come out and help these disabled people have a great outing. Tracy?
This is Tracy Johnson, a veteran. I'll let her talk for a while.
Hi, nice to meet everyone. Hank really covered everything. Hank, you're pretty good at this. One of the things, I guess, that I wanted to highlight was going to be the ADA course, of course, and he talked about it a little bit. So it's a nine-hole, completely accessible, so you see they have little beefier tires on the carts that they use for the disabled. And as a layperson, I was thinking, I'm speaking of myself, I thought, "How in the world are they going to play golf if they're so disabled?" I really was confused. Well, that's where this came in, and I thought it was absolutely amazing. So this is a chucker, and this is one of the things that they use, and it's just handheld, and they don't have to stand, walk, anything, just have one good arm, I think, or leg, I suppose, there are lots of different ways. He's really good at it.
You just swing it, and that's your, that's your drive. And if you want to do a little chip, you do a little, you know, a little.
Oops!
You hit the wrong way. Anyway, this is a new thing called a chucker.
Yeah.
But for people that don't normally play golf, it has a lot of opportunity to get out and do something, feel good about yourself, and. Did I hurt you, Elaine? Do you know? Apologies here.
Anyway, so it's also for children, so it's not just those with disabilities, but for children also, and they can play, children can play free on the nine-hole course as well as the disabled. So they don't have to pay for anything, they can borrow the chucker, and they can have some lessons out there. We have a couple of professional golf players that are coming in, I think I put those on Hank's bulletin, but they're going to give instruction, and we're having a chucker contest, so whoever throws the farthest ball, we're going to kind of have a little award there, but mostly it's about awareness, really, to tell people that this is here and it's available, so that they're not discounted just because they maybe couldn't walk to the hole or use both arms, I suppose. But it's a beautiful thing, so we want to spread the word about that. And there's also a fishing contest, I think, that we planned on, so the longest fish. That's going to really bring the kids in, I believe, more so than the adults necessarily, but that's what we have. And I think you covered everything, Hank.
Questions from the council?
So this is July 2nd.
Yes, it's Monday.
Which is a Monday, okay? And then it's 8:30 to 2:30. So if people are interested, it says heroesouting@gmail.com, or they can call Pat at 462-9531, or Danny Baumgartner at 659-1961.
And we might mention that when they make a donation, if they want to as a sponsor, because I think, yes, we really want your money. The VFW has been so gracious because writing a check gives you a tax deduction when you write the check to VFW post-1003, and then you just memo it to Heroes Outing, and then they'll transfer those funds. And they've been doing great raisings in dollars, they think have over.
Right around $7,000.
$7,000 in the bank, so.
Great.
A sponsor for one veteran is $600, and you get one of our really cool t-shirts, and a sponsor for a four-person scramble is $2,000. And you'll get four shirts, and then each of our participants, you can take 72 votes of golf. And they don't have to be totally, totally critically, I mean, I've got two firefighter teams, I have two firefighter teams coming from Columbia.
Cousins?
Yes, I don't have any police teams yet. So, anyway, the bottom line is, they will each get a shirt, and their guests will get a shirt, and then the Department of Conservation will be working with our groups that want to fish as opposed to golf. I'm so excited.
This is our first event, we want to grow it and expand it, and the key thing to remember is just not for veterans, it's for all the special needs community.
Well, thank you for all that you do for our veterans, all of you, and Hank, real quick, while you're here, would you, you want to give us an update on the events coming up on Memorial Day, on that Monday you're having at Freedom's Corner?
There's no ceremony.
You can come to the podium, or not at Freedom's Corner, I'm sorry, it's at, it's at the National Cemetery. Aren't you, are you all in charge of that?
No, I'm not.
Okay, I'm sorry, Dawn is, Dawn is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I am president of the Jefferson City Veterans Council, and the Veterans Council is made up of all the veterans, service organizations in the Jefferson City area, and we have a program at 10:30 in the morning on Memorial Day at the National Cemetery in Jefferson City, and we will be reading all of the names of the veterans from this area that have passed away since last Memorial Day. We do a two-bell ceremony for them. We have a speaker, Terry Walker, the new football coach at JC, is going to be our speaker this year. He's a retired Air Force veteran fighter pilot, and we have the two-bell ceremony, and it starts at 10:30, so please come out.
Great, thank you. That's always a very nice ceremony that they have, and so that is at the National Cemetery. And the other thing I was referring to, that I know Hank Stratman has been very instrumental in the Freedom's Corner as well, so there's a lot of wonderful veterans things. We have Councilman Fitzwater?
Can I just clarify something? One of the forms has July 1st, is that July 2nd?
Can we clarify, July 2nd?
This one has July 1, that should be July 2, is that? Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't two events.
So we'll verify, and that is July 2nd. All right, so.
What we hope to do is, is chill side dress, and so we can say that chill city even though they travel around town or the Jefferson City, into the parade, so that we can then recognize and have a little ceremony. So we might have a surprise guest, I just didn't provide yet, but any guests, we don't have a surprise.
All right, well, we wish you the best of success with this first-time event, so thank you. Hopefully, we'll have council members in attendance there. Thank you. All right, Item C, we have the cardboard recycling update. Mrs. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Doing the presentation from up here, just in case, I'm sure there's going to be lots of questions about what's been happening in the last several weeks. Earlier this month, specifically May 9, we, staff was notified by New World of their intention to terminate the contract that they have with the City of Jefferson effective June 15. The city currently has a $0 contract with New World Recycling Center to service nine bins that we have around the city, which are up there on the screen. It's the white bins that we have around town at six different locations. The termination caused the staff, city staff, to ask the Public Works and Planning Committee direction for the cardboard recycling. You know, basically, what do we, what are our next steps and what should we do? And after going over, you know, all of our options, is for the time being to. And after going over, you know, all of our options, is for the time being to temporarily remove the cardboard bins to an off-site location until we can kind of get our bearings and figure out what to do next, what our next steps could be for the cardboard recycling. And just to provide a little history, the white containers were purchased back in the 1990s as part of a recycling grant to provide city residents an option for recycling cardboard, newspapers, and magazines. The containers, as you may see, are, you know, approximately 24 to 28 years old, and they're in rough condition and will require some type of maintenance, they're coming to the end of their useful life. Currently, there is no budgeted funds for, dedicated to the maintenance of these cardboard recycling containers. Back in 19, or back in November of 2009, our current provider, Republic Services, began to offer the single-stream recycling, which is the gray-top lids carts that is offered to the residents. Since the residents are provided the single-stream recycling, which accepts the newspaper and cardboard, plastic among other items, it is suspected that the main users of these white cardboard bins that are stationed around at the six different locations are, the users are businesses or county residents. And actually, a lot of times, whenever there is a dumping outside the bins, we do take a look at the mailing labels, and if we determine that it is a business, we'll contact the business for them to clean up the site, or if we get it noticed like it's a moving, whereas somebody's moving into a house and they're unpacking their stuff, and there are lots of boxes, we'll contact that address as well. So, it's been, you know, over the last several years, it has been a side of dumping where the bins get filled, overfilled, the cardboard gets left outside the container, and which is nonproductive because it does contaminate the cardboard, it gets left out in the rain, much like over the weekend, the cardboard gets wet and has to be thrown away, unfortunately. But I am here tonight reporting that effective June 15th, we'll be moving those plastic newspaper and cardboard recycling bins, those white bins, to an off-site area temporarily. What's on the screen is actually what is posted on all nine of the bins. You know, yes, it is gonna be removed, but we are identifying other recycling opportunities. City residents within the city limits, once again, has the availability for the gray-top lids, single-stream recycling. Commercial, that is anybody with a commercial account within the city limits, there is a recycling option available through Republic Services, which is our exclusive provider, to contact them at the phone number stated. New World Recycling does have a drop-off, they do take drop-offs, and they also accept the plastic, aluminum, tin, paper, and a lot more other items. And then there's Federal Recycling located off of West Main Street, and that also accepts recycling goods. We have their phone numbers up there, so if someone goes to the bins, they can call and see if the other opportunity is open and accepting materials at that time. Essentially, you know, yes, this may be going away for right now, but there are other options to recycle. So, if any residents or any businesses have concerns, there is other opportunities, they're all located locally, and we have been trying to spread the word of, you know, removing the bins effective June 15th, which is a Friday. We've posted the information on the Jefferson City Recycles Facebook page, the city of Jefferson's Facebook page, the Parks and Recreation also posted on their Facebook page, they'll be releasing the information out on the Friends of the Park newsletter as well. It's gonna be on our website homepage, and then there's gonna be multiple news articles as well. I do want to throw out, or provide the information, that staff did estimate that it would cost for Republic to carry this program on through the end of our fiscal year, which is October 31st. So, for June through October, it would cost approximately $19,000 to carry the program on as is, at its current six locations for nine bins. So, did want to throw that in there. I would be happy to answer any question from council at this point.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott, for that report, and Councilman Hussey?
It's not a question, I would just add that this topic has come before the Public Works and Planning Committee of the council, and we discussed and explored various options, and maybe gave an informal direction to pursue this path as well. That committee decided against, you know, a supplemental appropriation at this time for the $19,000, I should say, decided against it. There was no action taken to say we should allocate that money at this time, and so the committee discussion, I think, followed this path as well, and felt like this was a reasonable option to address this issue at this time.
Yes, and if I may add, we're gonna be reaching out to Cole County, since we suspect that a majority of the users are Cole County residents, and actually, a lot of the phone calls I have received since the first newspaper article has been from county residents. So, we'll be reaching out to Cole County to see if they're interested in creating a recycling, cardboard recycling program, or partner of some sort, so it's, so the option's not completely taken away for the county residents. But then again, New World and Federal, all those businesses do accept from outside city residents.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott, and certainly, we still encourage residents to recycle, and having the single stream in Jefferson City, we are so very fortunate. It's a wonderful program for residents, and there are still, as you can see, there's still options for drop-off locations, they're just going to be different, rather than bins randomly in a parking lot, which frankly, didn't look that great in some cases. Instead, it will be taking them just directly to the drop-off facility. So, just to make it really clear, that people still have the option, rather than taking them here and maybe not being able to fit and kind of shove them in the bins, they can actually take them to the drop-off, and I think it's probably, people may find it, if they are using the drop-off, that it's probably easier and better to actually take them to the facilities.
Yes.
To the ones that are listed there. So, we still want to encourage people to continue their recycling efforts.
Absolutely.
Any other comments of council?
All right.
Thank you. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. I'll start with mine. So, June 1st, Friday, June 1st, is gonna be a busy day. It is the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament. So, this is something that was started by Mayor John Landwehr, and it is Friday, June 1st, at Oak Hills Golf Course, and we want to highlight Oak Hills, that's why John Landwehr started this many years ago, is to highlight our golf course, and it all benefits Jefferson City Kiwanis. So, if you want to start your weekend early at noon that day, I would love to have city council members present, or some different city departments playing in the Mayor's Cup. So, noon lunch and registration, and 1:00 PM start, it is $80 a person, 160 for a two-person team. So, if you're interested, you can call John Landwehr at 690-1915, or Jlandwehr at cvdl.net, or you can let me know, and my cell is 230-7645. So, we will look forward to a fun Mayor's Cup that is now in its 14th, 13th, or 14th year, so appreciate that. And I also want to announce that same day, that morning, is the Power in Purple Day. We are recognizing the Relay for Life, which is also that weekend, and the American Cancer Society wears purple for recognition of their efforts. So, at City Hall that day, if council members are interested, actually, you're all kind of getting a preview, because you have your purple on, which is really great, it's kind of unplanned purple day here, but Power in Purple Day, Friday, June 1st, at 9:00 AM, if you'd like to come to City Hall, kind of like we did the Wear Red Day, where we all, council and city staff, we will all wear purple on Friday, June 1st at 9, and meet here in the lobby for a picture and celebrate that. Relay, actually, the American Cancer Society asked that we wear purple from June 1st through the 16th, so, but we're gonna celebrate and kick it off on June 1st here. Also, of course, my announcements would not be complete without announcing that Big &amp; Rich, as we all know, that they're coming down by the river in...
Jeff City.
Jeff City Mo. All right, you're getting so much better, this is great. So, that is going to be Saturday, June 30th. Tickets are available on salutetoamerica.org, so look forward to having Big &amp; Rich perform at the Missouri State Penitentiary Concert inside the walls. It's our third annual, and we are all very excited, Jeff City Mo, so, or as Carlos would say, Roll Tide, I don't know, so Jeff City Mo, right there. So, very, very excited for Big &amp; Rich to be here, and you might have seen the mayor, I think I probably still have a line from the cowboy hat that I had on today going around town.
I saw you.
We were seen and heard down by the river, I think, fortunately, or unfortunately, I don't know, but yeah, that was your mayor, Jeff City. So, those are my announcements, and are there any city council, we have our city council four standing committees, are there any committee announcements at this time? Councilman Prather?
I just want to mention, we are gonna have a finance meeting at 7:30 this Thursday across the hall.
Great, thank you. Any other committee announcements? And Item B, I want to announce the Gregory Stockard Award winners. This year, our own councilwoman, Laura Ward, was recognized along with Holly Stitt, Holly is owner of Avenue HQ. So, their names are on this plaque, and this plaque was dedicated last week at the historic awards, Heritage Awards, and this recognizes, it's in memory of Greg Stockard, who was one of the most passionate distinguished service award, he was so passionate about history, and it's very fitting, Laura, that you would receive this award in honor of Greg Stockard, so we officially congratulate you. And you also had a Golden Hammer, congratulations. So, not to put you on the spot, but do you want to announce the Golden Hammer, or mention anything about that?
Well, I chair the Golden Hammer Committee, which is through the historic city of Jefferson, and from the months of May through September each year, we kick off our season to honor and recognize those individuals who restore historic properties in our city. There are other awards that recognize buildings, but the organization wanted to recognize individuals for their vision and their hard work and their time and their talent. Last month, we awarded to, it was Dustin and Jim Long, for their renovation of a small bungalow on West High Street behind the Water Company. And for June, on June 9th at 11, we're honoring, it's Tyson Bauer, for his renovation of 115, no, 315 West Atchison at 11 o'clock. So, anyone that's interested in history and historic buildings and would like to see a transformation, please join us on June 9th at 11 o'clock.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ward, and congratulations again on your honor and recognition. And I'd like to also ask Mr. Todd Spalding to make some announcements.
Thank you, Mayor, just two things. First, also on June 1st, that evening, is the Mink League opener of Jefferson City Renegades Play at Vivian Field Friday night, June 1st, starting at 7:00. And we're having the parks, we're having a trail gate from 5:30 to 7:00, right there on the trail by Vivian Field, so we would ask anyone to come out. Also, we're gonna have a real quick ribbon cutting, because we have done some renovations to Vivian Field, our historic Vivian Field, we've taken the dugouts back kind of to their former glory, and installed also a new, real nice scoreboard there, so we'd like you all to be involved in the ribbon cutting on that evening about 6:30.
Wonderful, so that's 6:30 on Friday, June 1st.
That's right.
Wonderful. I'm unavailable, so hopefully, we can find another council member that could be available, or multiple council members, and I really like that, the trail gate, that's very nice.
Yeah, that's not me, you know, this is Parks people, we have little...
That makes sense.
Also, I wanted to announce too, that the master plan, after about a year, we're nearing completion, it should go for final review to the Park Commission at our meeting here in a couple of weeks, and so I'd like to also share that with you all, and have a time for you to look through it real good and answer any questions with that, but it's a, I think, a wonderful document, it's gonna be a great working document for us to move forward for the future of our park system. That's all I got.
We'll look forward to hearing the results.
Great.
Thank you. Are there any other council or staff announcements this evening? All right. Item nine, Lincoln University update from Mrs. Carolyn Wanjaro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and the council. Just two updates for Lincoln. The new president comes in on the 1st of June, we're excited about that, and summer school starts next week, for those who are attending summer school, yes.
Mrs. Wanjaro, are you attending summer classes?
No, ma'am, but I am working in the president's office for the summer, which is, it's a transition from the Office of Student Engagement to the president's office, but it's, for the past week, it's been fairly good.
Councilman Graham?
She gets a chance to see my face every day.
That is, that is very true. That is, that is absolutely, for the past week, Monday through Thursday, he just hops in and then goes out.
Well, we are going to look forward to welcoming Mrs. Geraldine Wolf...
Wolf.
Wolf, we are gonna look forward to welcoming her after she's had a chance to get settled here, so we'll definitely welcome her, and had a great event for Mr. Middleton with his retirement from Lincoln, so thank you. Item 10, presentations from the gallery, we don't have any signed up this evening. Item 11, consent agenda, is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced, 2018-12.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 21 nuisances pertaining to administrative costs for nuisance abatements.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk indicated, this bill would basically move the section of code in Chapter 21 that refers to the current abatement administration fee into Appendix Y, and it would also increase it to $250 from $100. The $100 was set in 2007, with our exercise last year in looking at software to help us with our processes, we determined that we are spending at least $233 on PPS staff alone, and up to several hundred dollars more, depending on the type of abatement. So, the administration fee of $100 right now does not even come close to covering the actual costs that we incur when we do have to abate a property. That also does not include any of the clerk's time to actually work up the paperwork or send it up to the courthouse. So, we are asking that the administration fee be increased to $250. We did look at some other communities, some communities have what you might call punitive system, one of them starts at $200, and may go up to $400 for the second offense, or $500 for the third, we advised, that is not a good system. So, we took a look at what our actual costs are, and have come up with $250 as the, would cover our minimum cost on all of our abatements, and I'd be glad to answer any questions on that.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sanders? Councilman Hensley?
Yeah, I have a few questions. This might sound really silly, okay. Would you consider the city's administrative costs for abating a nuisance to be a cost incurred by the city in the abatement of a nuisance?
Most of these, I think 92% or something like that, we actually get paid and returned back to the city, so if we just keep charging $100 on all those that are repaid, that $100, we're still losing 150 or whatever the additional cost is. So, while we may be charging $250, I know it's a hard answer to follow too, we anticipate getting that back to cover our expenses. I'm not sure if I answered your question, though.
So, in existing Section 21-12A, it says, "Any and all costs incurred by the city in the abatement of a nuisance shall essentially be charged against the property and collected in a certain way." So, that sounds like any time that goes into enforcing, we're already allowed to collect.
But we have a set fee of $100, and I think that $100 was based on some previous analysis of what time does it actually take?
So, if we have a provision that already allows us to collect actual costs incurred, it seems to me like B is simply sort of the fine that's applied for a nuisance violation, right? If we're already allowed to collect this amount of what we're actually incurring, then this other fee, which by the definition would seem to fall into any and all costs incurred, would seem to be above and beyond the actual cost that's being incurred.
We do not itemize the cost for each abatement and charge them whatever it is, so if we abated... So, if we abated your property and it took us longer time, we don't track every single hour and every single charge we incur. I think Columbia actually charges the actual cost for the abatement fee. We just do not track for each individual abatement what that, that dollar amount is. Is that what you're asking? Why do we do that? And this does not go on top of that. This is what we do in lieu of itemizing the abatement costs.
Okay. And maybe it's just a matter of how the ordinance is written, but if, part of the rationale that was included in the materials for tonight was actually recovering the cost of what we're actually spending. So, if we're actually already allowed to collect the cost of what we're actually spending, then it sounds like we're just trying to raise the fine from $100 to $250.
Yeah, it, it's not really a fine, it's the cost recovery. And the code says $100 is what it is. So, it sounds like the code is conflicting between we can collect the actual cost versus the $100. Is that maybe where the issue is?
Right. It says, "In addition to any charges for the actual abatement," then impose a fee.
We reimburse the people that mow the yard or clean out the trash. Yes, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
It would seem like the administrative costs, though, would be included in any all costs. Anyway, what I'm getting to is, it sounds like we're trying to, like we, we want to go from 100 to 250 to reflect the actual costs incurred of enforcing a law.
Of staff time, yes. Yes. Not necessarily the actual cost of what a contractor would be mowing or abating the nuisance. It, it's the cost that the city is actually incurring to manage that, to get the contractor out there, to call them, to, to go out there and just process the whole abatement process.
Is there an indication that the $100 is simply not keeping people generally from meeting their obligation?
The $100 is not keeping people from using us as their maintenance service. We have several people that, they say it's easier for us.
Is this across the board, or is this just, I'm sorry to interrupt?
No, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Across the board, or, or just a handful of people who are repeat offenders?
There's a handful of people that are repeat offenders. We actually try to work with people. We don't like to abate property. We like to get compliance voluntarily. Most of the people that we get compliance with voluntarily are the general citizens that don't have these issues. Something happened, they were on vacation, they had a medical issue, they just didn't get to it. They'll call us and we'll work with them. It's normally the repeat offenders that are either absentee owners, they own abandoned buildings, or they're landlords and own lots of property, and it's easier for them just to have us do it.
But, so the, the one-off offender who, for whatever reason, isn't able to meet their obligation for a while, would be charged the 250 along with the person who is a repeat offender?
Yes. Now, if someone calls us within that 10 days and tells us, "I've been gone," or "I broke my leg and worked with us," and they say they'll get to it next week, we'd rather have them get to it next week than use our money and our funds and tie it up in that whole process. So, we do work with the offenders to try to get them to, to comply voluntarily. We just don't, on every piece of property, when we send out a 10-day notice, on the day 11, we're not just there with the contractor mowing. We try to work with, with the clients.
I promise I only have like two more questions. So, the, the first is, two of the four cities that you all listed in the materials for tonight have a staggered or graduated fee approach, where the first offense is X dollars, the second offense is 2X, the third offense is 3X. Would that be a possible system here, instead of raising all of the rates across the board?
I'm going to suggest Ryan Moulman chimes in, because the Law Department told us that that was more punitive and not advisable.
So, what this cost, obviously, what, what, sorry, not obviously, but what it, what it attempts to do is recapture staff time that's, that is expended to abate the, the nuisance. And so, there is a concern over systems that have this graduated system, that at the low end, you are subsidizing offenders. And at the high end, with the graduated system, you are penalizing offenders, as opposed to what this fee is supposed to be doing, is recapturing costs. And, and fines are dealt with separately than cost recovery. This is not a system where we can oppose an administrative fine. Fines are dealt semi-criminally through the municipal court system. This is a, a cost recovery fee. And so, where you have a graduated system, it makes it look like it presents itself as a fine system. And when you have a fine system, or something that looks like a fine system in an area where you're supposed to have a cost recovery mechanism, it's hard to defend. And so, we know what, we know what our costs are. We've done the study of, of staff time, and to set that amount consistently for every case, at a, at a set amount, is much more defensible and looks less like a fine and more like a cost recovery in the long run. If ever challenged, we would, we'd be in a lot better position to defend this system as opposed to a graduated system.
All right. And finally, I, I know that you said that we don't currently track staff time sort of per file or per call, but we did, in this case, do a study and determine how much time on average is spent per, per call or per issue. Is there anything keeping us from tracking actual staff time and applying Section 21-12A that allows us to recover the actual cost of abating a nuisance?
We are getting new software that will be helping us track our time out in the field. I'm not sure how much of the abatement process specifically it would track back at the office.
You're dealing with multiple persons.
The, as Sunny Sanders indicated, we are getting new software. I'm just not 100% sure if it will come back and say, "Per this address, the inspector spent, you know, X amount of time." What we did is, as part of our analysis, we took an address on average about four miles outside of the City Hall address. So, staff time to drive there, staff time to review the, the property, staff time to come back to the City Hall to, you know, and put the information into our existing database, which is Springbrook. And then there's the follow-up of, or to send the letter, write the letter and mail it out. And then there's the follow-up, so driving back out four miles. This is just four miles from Jefferson, from City Hall, so it's not including the extended part of our city limits. So, it's driving back out there to verify whether or not it's still in violation. If it's still in violation, then we come back and work with the contractor to set up a time for him to go out and abate the nuisance. And then, once the nuisance is abated, then the, the inspector goes back out to the property to verify, take pictures. And so, there's multiple trips to a property, that is the staff time. And then we got the overhead indirect or direct cost for each inspector figured out hourly, based on the estimated time per abatement, coming out to $233. But then, if you add in the summons, it takes a couple, several more hours to do summons and serve them, and then doing hearings and whatnot. And so, that's why we're averaging those out, and it's actually $343, I believe, on average for any of the abatement action that our property inspectors take.
Great. Thank you very much.
And if I may add, that does not include operational costs, training, educational costs, and supplies that the inspectors may use or benefit from in, in their workload too. So, we didn't include the total cost of all staffing.
Any other questions on that bill? Okay. 2018-13.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Section 19-401 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Jefferson by the modification of portions relating to the 100 block of Madison Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this applies to the 100 block of Madison Street, which is there by the governor's mansion area. Right now, the parking in the code is, shows for two-hour parking time limit, so this would modify that to a four-hour time limit. Had a request from volunteers in the area that had served the governor's mansion primarily, that we, we look at changing that, didn't give them enough time while they were there to park. The, so we've kind of done a trial period from January up until now, to see if, you know, any problems would be created by changing the time that we're allowed to do that by the code, have a temporary trial period. And we didn't find any issues, so we're recommending it be codified and move forward to the four-hour time limit.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. 2018-14.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Jefferson by the modification of portions of Creek Trail Drive.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This action is a result of our, the new high school traffic study. So, we had, we actually asked the, the school district to conduct a traffic study for the new high school, and we, we put a map up here showing the, the requests there in red. But basically, once we got the traffic study back, one of the main recommendations was to modify the road segment, as you see in red, from Edgewood out to where the new city street, that the city and county have a project to work with on, on the school site, where it turns up and goes to the high, new high school, to modify that to basically a three-lane section. The roadway width would support it, the, by removing the parking that exists today. The, there was, so we, we did a multi-step process to make sure we informed folks. So, we did a mailing to the businesses in the area. We took this to our Traffic and Transportation Commission and let them come there and look at the issue. They, they did approve the request, or approved moving it forward to the, remove the parking. Also talked about it at a Public Works and Planning Committee meeting. I would point out, there was, there was some opposition. We talked about this a few years back and elected not to do it at that time, but that was before the high school was coming and the, and the additional traffic. I believe the, if you, I don't have my pointer, I forgot the clicker, but, but a lot of people park near the Brick House Deli. I'm sure many people here are familiar with that area. There's some street parking in that area. We did, I can't get my pointer in the right spot, you know, right, you can see cars on the map anyway, where there's a few people parked. But that's predominantly where people tend to park, maybe around lunchtime, concentrate there around that Brick House Deli, right at Edgewood, which is some of the most congested area anyway. So, we're trying to let people turn right, get a lot of backup in the left-hand turn lane, so we're trying to, trying to address that. And then, at the, if I can just go back here. Then Habitat for Humanity Restores in this corridor down towards the other end, and they get some parking on Saturdays as well, when they have their sales going on. But with the increased traffic due to the new high school, we also see construction traffic will pick up over time in this area. Concrete and quarry are real near, just across the street. We're recommending to go ahead and modify the roadway, stripe it as three-lane, and, and then take care of this corridor, remove the parking. I would also note that the Greenway Trail, new loops being constructed, is almost completed. That goes from Edgewood down behind La Carre Drive, you see it to the left-hand side of the map. It will come to Creek Trail and go up and, and terminate for now, right where the new Capital City High School symbol is there, close where the new roadway will be built. We anticipate that'll probably generate a fair amount of foot traffic and bicycle traffic, so the three-lane road would be a little safer for that as well. In the meanwhile, that will eventually be constructed. We're looking at a project to construct that behind the commercial buildings there along Werres Creek over to Edgewood. So, so a lot of activity going on, bottom line is, in the area, and we'd like to get out, get ahead of this traffic issue. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Marash? And, Mr. Marash, I know you said there's some opposition from the businesses that, I believe it's mostly employee parking in that, in the vicinity of the Brick House Deli area, but I don't know if, if there's any options to have their employees park slightly further away in some of the more vacant lots? And have they talked to other property owners, or have you helped facilitate any of that?
Uh, we, we didn't necessarily. I know Mr. Otke and some of his probably partners, I assume, own some of the multiple businesses in the area. That might be a possibility. We also have a, a lot, I think it's by easement that Greenway Trail users can use, right here where the cursor is. Very few, if anybody ever parks there during the week. I've never actually noticed anybody parking there. There might be one or two on a Saturday, but that lot's, I understand, by an easement from the developer to the city for this Greenway Trail parking. So, that would be an option too. It's not a sign that you can't park there. Or a part of that, if this were to go through, we also want to move the crossing on Edgewood down to the intersection, so there would be a sidewalk connection directly. So, there are some options, I believe, there.
Okay. Would you be able to have someone from the city communicate some of those options to the businesses there?
Certainly.
Might help as we look forward to taking this bill up next time. Okay. Any other questions on this? All right. Thank you. 2018-15.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Section 19-401 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Jefferson by the addition of portions of East High Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This bill would basically add a accessible ADA, accessible space in the 300 block of High. It was at the request of the library, so it would be the space on their side of the street, just, just west of Adam Street.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. 2018-16.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Curtis Manus Schulte Incorporated for the construction of Fire Station Number Two.
Chief Schofield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This, this bill would authorize the, the contract with the general contractor, Curtis Manus Schulte, as the clerk indicated. The, the base bids came back well, and Curtis Manus was both the lowest, and we felt also very qualified to do the work. Because of that, we, we recommend that we also award some of the alternates that were specified to the tune of $257,007, $2,007, I'm sorry, $257,798. And if I would call your attention to page two of your, your packet, you can go through some of those alternates really quickly. The first one was the, the police substation addition. The second one is the training mezzanine, which is in the Bay Area of the station, allows us to do some interior training year-round. And, and the third one is really kind of the most confusing. There were originally four subalternates, and so, as we went through the process of identifying which ones were the most important, it was not an all-of-the-above, it was an either-or for A and B, and then we added on C and D. So, that's maybe a little point of confusion in the, the different alternates that were awarded. But we really felt like that quality, durable, as was mentioned earlier, an industrial grade of concrete was really important for this project due to the weight of the equipment and the, the long use that we expect from the facility. Additional there, we also recommend more durable kitchen countertop surfaces. Number five, a dual-fuel generator and reservoir tank that would be buried on-site there as a underground storage tank. Number seven was some exterior equipment screen wall there that really is an extension of the police substation addition, that partitions off some of the utility areas. And number seven, I'm sorry, number nine, was video surveillance access control. Number 10 was more of a passive green initiative with rigid insulation underneath the slab to utilize better energy efficiency. So, with all that said, I would also indicate there were three things that we opted not to recommend. And the first one of those, as we mentioned before, was, was 3A. It was just some additive in the concrete. The other one was number, number six, which was some resilient rubberized flooring in the, in the fitness room. We felt like we could do that more economically on, on our own after the construction was complete. And then, number eight was nitrogen inerting inside the fire sprinkler system. And as you all know, we're big advocates of fire sprinklers. We just didn't feel like the nitrogen inerting was something that was necessary at this point in the project, that we could accomplish that by other means, making sure that it was built and constructed correctly. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know we have the consultants here, we have Kerry Gannford from the Architects Alliance. We also have a couple of members of the committee that helped develop these specifications as part of the Fire Department Initiative. And we're, again, very pleased that the bids came back favorably. As you can see, it came in under what we thought. There were many variables as part of this process that we just didn't know, and so, we wanted to be conservative in our estimates.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions or council discussion? Councilman Graham?
Chief, what would be the cost of the construction?
Fire Station 3 was, had funding from many different sources, and so, when you talk about the total project cost, it's kind of difficult to pin that down, because we, we purchased land originally and then sold some of that land back to the, to the water company for the construction of their water tower. But if I recall correctly, the construction costs were about 2.4 million, and I believe Matt Marash might be able to maybe add somewhat. I know he was part of that project as well. But I believe it was around 2.4 for construction cost.
Any further questions or council discussion? All right. Thank you, Chief. Item 13, Bills pending. I also want to thank Mr. Gampfert and those that have served on the committee. Appreciate your help on that as well. Item 13, we have 2018-05.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Bartlett &amp; West in the amount of $285,521.50 for the Dunkland Street Bridge and Corridor Project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Just like the clerk indicated, this is an engineering contract for the Dunkland Street Bridge over Wears Creek. It's just kind of somewhat east of Missouri Boulevard, I guess I would say, there by the Greenway Trailhead. The, this is the design project. The funding's from the half-cent sales tax. It'd be a city-county project. So this is one of the listed projects and the sales tax that we'd accomplished together. And so, we'll eventually split all these costs to go to construction. I think we have it scheduled for bid in 2019, or, I mean, excuse me, it could bid in 2019, probably. The design would hopefully be done by then. But I think it was scheduled in 2020, in the cash flow, actually. Covers more than just the bridge. It has some sidewalk and greenway components, some lighting. We're talking also about kind of a corridor in this area, but looking at the signal at Broadway as part of this and some of the sidewalk connections there as well. The, also includes some sanitary sewer work to be done with the project. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or council deliberation? All right. Roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2018-06.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to grant a stormwater easement to Scholastic Incorporated over city-owned property at 3025 Robinson Road.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. So this new stormwater easement will allow a couple things. It'll allow Scholastic to build a line from their parking lot onto city property, which is where the new fire station's going to be, that we just talked about. It'll also be building the detention and water quality basin for their parking lot and the station. So we kind of are lucky to get them to do that work for us. And so, they were a little bit ahead of us. So that'll protect the downstream property owners from those issues. And be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or council discussion? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2018-08.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Jefferson Asphalt Company in the amount of $935,209 for the 2018 Mill and Overlay Project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Like clerk indicated, Mill and Overlay contract we do every year. It's from, source of funding's a half-cent sales tax. And some of you had asked me about the list. I emailed those to you, but we also included in this packet. I think the clerk uploaded it to the last edition. And be happy to answer any questions about it.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Councilman Mahalovich?
There was some discussion that if we had any savings in our bidding, that we could start on your 2019 list. Was there any savings that we can anticipate to do any of the projects in the 2019?
Well, I would recommend we don't move forward with those yet until towards the end of the contract. Sometime, this is a, this contract's based on quantity placed. So we have estimates of that. Obviously, those go up and down a little bit as we go through the list. Some of the other money, probably shows the money a little different in the bill than in actuality because we also have the Fog Seal project out of this that was already, that has been approved. There'll be some testing that we'll have to pay for through a consultant. ESNS here locally does some testing. We're also doing some rating of streets with these funds. So I would hold off on that until towards the end of the project. And if we can work in some additional streets, we always try to do that towards the end.
It was reported in Public Works that there was going to be a tool used, a software or some instrument used to evaluate the surface of streets?
Correct.
When is that going to be implemented?
Well, we're just now going out for an RFP to see what companies can do that for us. So it'll take a little while. We typically would do that probably late fall at the earliest.
So would we anticipate possibly changing our 2019 and beyond projects based on the outcomes of the, of that test?
It's a possibility. We do re-rate those every year, anyway. But most of the ones listed here are in rough condition. They're, I think we'll probably find, like we talk about every year, there's probably more, more streets in need of overlay and repair than we have money to do. But it'll give us a good, good idea, independent idea of what are the issues from that standpoint, and then allow us to try to help prioritize some of those. Or find additional money if the case is.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Councilman Graham?
So, Mr. Marash, when will they start? And when is the completion date for?
When will the contracts start? Typically, I think we've had our pre-construction meeting with the Jefferson Asphalt. They obviously have other work as well. But they said they probably get started in late July. It actually usually goes pretty quickly. You know, it can go up into November, obviously, if the weather is cooperative. But with the number of streets we have, you know, a couple, I would anticipate a couple of months. But they do have some timeframe to complete it.
Thank you.
Councilman Mahalovich?
That brings up another question. Have we, are we getting better communication with Missouri American Water in terms of their schedule of maintenance, so that we can anticipate where they're planning on their summer maintenance?
Well, we are, I think we have started one meeting with them recently as a result of a rate case, the rate case. So they have pledged to work with us more. And so, we'll see how that goes.
Any further council discussion? Roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes. We've already taken up 2018-09, 2018-10.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of 2% for the privilege of storing, using, or consuming within the city any article of tangible personal property pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of Sections 144.600 through 144.761 RISMO, providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced, or raised in the same amount as any city sales taxes repealed, reduced, or raised, and providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the primary election called and to be held in the city on Tuesday, August 7, 2018.
And we have a substitute to correct the number of the bill. Do we have a motion to accept?
Motion to adopt the substitute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the substitute? All in favor to accept the substitute, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. At this time, we'll take up the substitute bill for 2018-10. Is there any, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Moulman?
Yeah, I won't belabor the issue too much. But this bill calls an election on August 7 to ask the voters of the City of Jefferson whether or not the city should impose a use tax, which would be equal to the city sales tax, total sales tax. At current time, that rate is 2%. This bill is tied, at least indirectly, to a deadline on cities to take action on a motor vehicle sales tax, which was set to expire in November of this year. We've been granted reprieve. That deadline has been pushed back by the General Assembly. We're still taking a look into the specifics of that. But this is a more broad use tax, which would apply to all purchases of goods outside the state that are brought into Jefferson City.
Any questions, council deliberation? Okay. Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2018-11.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract for sale of real estate with the state of Missouri.
And same as the last bill, we all entertain a motion to accept the substitute to correct the bill number.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on the substitute? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So we'll take up substitute bill for 2018-11. And Mr. Moulman.
Thank you. This bill would authorize a contract to convey the portion of the MSP, Missouri State Penitentiary, property to the City of Jefferson. It sets forth various requirements and program for development that I detailed last week. Once again, I'm not going to go into too much detail unless the council has any specific questions that they would like to have addressed.
Thank you. Any council questions? Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. One very specific question. Has there been any indication that the state would be willing to modify the area surrounding the gas chamber so that perhaps if it stays in its current location, it is not constantly visible from all points? Perhaps putting a structure around it or otherwise hiding the execution chamber from view?
I don't think that there's anything in this contract which would prevent that if some sort of structure or enclosure or building or whatever it would be, would want to be constructed to contain that particular piece of property. I don't think this agreement would disallow that in any way. So I don't think an amendment would be necessary if that were to be determined to be the best course for this development.
Do you think that's something that we'd have to ask permission for?
It's, well, the property itself that contains the gas chamber is going to be retained by the state. This is not part of this conveyance. So the gas chamber itself and a, essentially the curtilage around the gas chamber is being retained by, retained in fee by the state. So it's not part of this conveyance. But if part of the development program, it turns out that that's something that we want to look into, yes, we would have to get permission from the state, you know.
Great. And finally, just one other thing. What we're looking at here in terms of what is actually done to develop the property is the ultimate use, right? It's not what facilities might be called. It is whether the use of the property is one of the items listed either in a primary or secondary or supporting use, right? So whether something is called potentially a conference center or a community center or a civic center, if the things that are conducted on-site are things that are on those lists, would you say that that would be the focus rather than what's in the name?
Absolutely. The important thing to look at is what it's being used for, and does that fit within the intention of the parties to the agreement. And so, whether or not something is called a conference center or a civic center or a community center, or whatever appellation you want to put on it, there is an intent of the parties that goes behind that that is, I think, apparent with what is in this bill. And so, regardless of what the name is, there is a definable use of what constitutes a conference center that can be judged when that use comes in.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions or council discussion? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Motion passes. Bill passes. Sorry. Item 14, informal calendar, nothing on the informal. Item 15, no resolutions. Item 16, nobody signed up under presentations from the gallery and other topics. Item 17, do we have any council and staff discussions of presentation topics? Item 18, any new business? 19, any unfinished business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.